At six thirty, I'm calling this meeting of the Joshua City Council to order. This is our normal monthly meeting here at City Hall. This is, this meeting is conducted under the auspices of the Open Meetings Act that Texas has put upon us. We do have a quorum present. At this time, Mr. Mike Kidd is going to lead us in the pledges. After the pledges, if everybody would please remain standing, Teresa Boydston is going to bring her indication.
The leaders give life to the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honesty, Texas, what I pledge allegiance to, the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Dear Father, we just thank you that we live in a country where we are free together. And we thank you that we live in a country where we are free to worship. God, I thank you for the leadership that you have put above us to lead our country, our state, and our city. Oh, my Father, as we begin this meeting, we pray for wisdom for all of our leaders, for the City Council, for our mayor, as they make decisions that affect all of us. And we thank you for the time that they spend serving, probably asking for the blessings of their families. We ask you the blessings for all of our people that serve our city, this story, so that we can thank you for who you are and what you do for us. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
If there's no objection, I'm going to go ahead and do our proclamation at this time. So if my three favorite pastors will stand up and come forward. Oh, wait a minute, that's recorded, isn't it?
Should have read your Miranda rap.
Yeah. Okay, National Day of Prayer. Whereas throughout history, America has faced trials and triumphs, and Americans have responded in prayer, seeking courage and comfort, inspiration, and joy-filled celebration. Faith compels us to seek and cling to the light in times of darkness and spread light to those in need. Whereas from the first gatherings of our founding fathers, elected officials have prayed and greeted those who they served and represent to join them in prayer, including the authors of our Declaration of Independence, who wrote that they, that they, the representatives of the United States of America and General Congress, assembled appealing to the Supreme Judge of the world. And this carried on to present day in presidential proclamations, such as last year's invitation to join him in asking for God's continued guidance, mercy, and protection. And whereas a National Day of Prayer has not only been a part of our heritage since it was declared by the First Continental Congress in seventeen seventy-five, but it is a public law established in the United States Congress in nineteen fifty-two, approved by a joint resolution and amended by Congress and President Reagan with Public Law one hundred dash three oh seven in nineteen eighty-eight, affirming that it is essential for us as a nation to pray and directs the President of the United States to set aside and proclaim the first Thursday of May annually as the National Day of Prayer. And whereas in every state across America, the observance of the National Day of Prayer will be held on Thursday, May second, twenty twenty-four, with the theme Lift Up the Word, Light Up the World, based on the verses found in Second Samuel twenty-two, twenty-nine through thirty-one. For you are my lamp, O Lord, and my God lightens my darkness. This God, his way is perfect. The word of the Lord proves true. He is a shield for all those who take refuge in him. And whereas we express our faith and exercise our freedom in prayer, then unite our hearts and voices in personal prayer and public gatherings across America with fervent praise, repentance, love, and humble intercession for our neighbors and nation, holding fast to the promises throughout the holy scriptures that the Lord hears and avails much as he answers the faith-filled prayers of his people. Now therefore, I Scott Kimball, Mayor of the City of Joshua, Texas, and on behalf of the Joshua City Council, who hereby proclaim the second day of May, twenty twenty-four, as National Day of Prayer. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the city to be affixed this eighteenth day of April, twenty twenty-four. We are having two celebrations of National Day of Prayer. On Thursday morning at seven fifteen, we're going to have a gathering out here around the city flagpole. And at seven P M. at Joshua Methodist Church, we're having a celebration of praise and prayer as well, and all are invited to attend. So I'd like to present copies of this proclamation to each of you, and thank you very much for what you do for the Lord and our community. Now, getting back to the order of business. We'll start our work session. At this time, item number one, review and discuss questions related to the budget report and financial statement for twenty twenty-four. Mr. Peacock.
Mayor, we've got the report as of March thirty-first in front of you. There were some items on here that you sent some questions about. Looks like a couple of these are just some simple trees that may be incorrect. There's a Christmas sleigh that we had built that the high school construction folks helped us out with. From looking at it, it's in the wrong category. It's got that line just a little out of whack. There's also, you'll notice in some of these areas where we did some severance agreements last month, some of those payments are reflected in this, so those lines are a bit above the outside of the fifty percent mark. Then there's also, you're still seeing some remnants of the roofing. One of the repair and maintenance lines on City Hall is still a little bit out. I think us all in halls have been pretty easy last few weeks. We're not out of money, so we're still in good shape. We have still asked department heads to hold back their spending as best they can, and they are doing that very well. Any specific questions?
I need any questions?
No, sir.
Mike? Hello? Toda?
What's there?
Shelley?
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much, Mike. Item number two, discuss relate, discussion related to capital improvement plan. Again, Mr. Peacock.
Well, the new proposed capital plan is in your packets. Charter requires that this be submitted ninety days prior to the submission of the final budget. So we are providing that for you today. This, this will be approved with the budget in either August or September, depending on how the calendar falls. The projected cost of the five-year plan currently is at seven point six three three million. The upcoming fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, those requests and projected costs are three point four million, depending on funding and. But with that, there's also, the plan put together on the backside of this, you'll see all of the requests that have been made by the department heads for each department. They have to answer any notes that I can't have questions about. The defender of it is also, a lot of it is just basic run-of-nail stuff, police cars and.
Motorcycles.
He's, yeah, he started as a motorcycle quest a couple of years ago, I guess, I guess. So I told him we'll at least talk about it.
Anybody have any questions on the C I P? No? Okay. We'll move on to item number three then. Discuss and receive board updates. Heritage preservation overlay District Commission. Do you have anybody here talk about that?
So I have one item for tonight and for a. That was presented at the first Monday of the month. Same meeting with plenty of zombies.
Alice, you'd mentioned something about maybe getting an alternate or something for the, was it Heritage? Or was it another board that?
It was a different board.
Different board?
Yes.
Okay, Type A. Shelley, anything exciting happen to Type A?
So items three and four later on our agenda tonight are to approve the treaty agreements that were approved at the Type A meeting for funding for Taco Bell and Whataburger.
Any questions on any of those reports? Okay, item number four, Parks Department presentation by Park Manager Stephen Gill. And yeah, step up to the microphone back there, so Alice can get it recorded.
All right, Lieutenant and I, we're going to talk about our mission, our team, and what we have, projects, tasks that we currently have going on, some of the impacts of Parks and Rec, our own community, customers, and future plans. Our mission is to foster vibrant and active community by creating and maintaining safe outdoor spaces where families can play, learn, gather, grip. All right, so the team, we have myself, Parks Manager, making spot for crew leader, and two crew members, Tom and Beasley, and Dusty and Soundsky. Our inventory consists of two trucks. We have two Z-turner mowers, we have a local turbine and a Z-turner blower. We have a commercial power washer, John Deere tractor loader. We have a Z return infield groomer, ore trailers, and some John Deere gators, air compressors, and some smaller. So wish list items, things that we could use, the box blade for tractor, rotary cutter, or brush hard type mower for our tractor. Bring attachment for our tractor, or if you notice the last thing, it's here. Box blade for our infield groomer, Z return sprayer spreader, and a laser grader kit for our infield machine, and a twenty-foot equipped tractor. Inventory also, the position of our facility is approximately forty-eight hundred square feet. Holds three offices, a kitchen area, city records storage room, small trailer room, could done less than office if they're needed to. And restroom with shower, two storage closets, a five-day shop area with two locks, two pretty decent sized storage rooms in the bedding areas, limited outdoor parking for city vehicles, and a chain link yard. So our chain link yard is open to view from Santa Fe, so we don't store any of our high value ticket items that can be walked. So we store the tractor and tractor. This operation, we have city park, everything in parentheses with acreage is the things that we actually have. So we have city park, which is twenty acres, city hall, which is point two acres, which is private apartment, which is about two acres, police department, which is point two acres, animal services, parks and rec office, park and ride, we handle trash out there, so produce trash and trash. Future side City Hall, which Public Works will help us take care of some of that. So that's a little bit of a burden part of us, but we'll still take some responsibility to check on. Projects and task lists. So I really want to pay attention to these next two slides, three slides. So our daily tasks, this is what I consider all of them, just want to have the guys go out and say, hey, what do you brought? Primarily consists of what's on the daily tasks. So they go out there, they clean the restroom, the park, and the ball fields. Roughly around twenty trash cans come in the special pet season, which we have for the more of a day. One of the tasks that they'll be assigned to do is turn on the splash pad, check the plumbing, check all the features. So that will be a daily thing. Going off the playground with our new surf thing, it will hopefully remove lens trip hazards, things that kids can burn off, so we will maintain. Handling weed removal for many of our granite beds or flower beds, some of the tar beds are in works that some people complain. But that would be a sign that they have to be there. Pick up loose traction in the park and pond, full traction park and ride, load the park and ball fields, knowing the municipal buildings, doing irrigation with pockets and players, creating for opossums. Getting them in the summertime, so it's becoming a very real problem in some of the areas. Creating for ants while running the pad. During anything, finding the park during this run-through process, a pair of safety issues, anything like that. Creating for weeds, removing dirt, milk, and trail when you inspect the park. And then we also are starting an inspection program where I actually have my certified playground inspection inspector license. So once this playground is complete, we will be doing monthly, I think, even to the ground inspection, or even for safety issues, damages, or any other repetitive issues with meteorites. Park certification, this is a program that other cities are doing. Looking through the ones that are bigger, but we'll go and inspect the park and kind of put on. And it will give us communication for where we are, where we need to improve. There's a drainage one-two-five system, so it's going to look handling for our irrigation, so how well the grass is growing, how well the tree is. Irrigation audits, so the current irrigation system at park is sixty zones on one system, over twenty acres. So it's a pretty substantial system. And we are getting into repairing that and the flood issues that are currently, so that's very important. But this is more test. This is our current project task list, I would split up into contracted projects and in-house projects. This is our living document. So this is our ever-changing, ever-changing, and the week since I've submitted this, this list is now obsolete. Things have been added, things have been made away. But this is kind of a living document. So. Contracted consists of our playground, shade structures, our splash pad, basketball servicing, this call, picking, taking patches. Our fencing and concrete installation, in-house projects, we have drinking pump, park sign, installing grills, assembling twenty trash cans, and installing them. The old benches that came out of the park, we're going to see if we can't refurbish those and reuse those. They do seem to be in good shape, so we're trying to spruce them up and use them for areas. Been on turf grass renovation, ball fields, get a chance to drive by. We've been working on field one, that one's actually closed for use, and we're going to be able to open it this weekend due to some of the renovations that have happened. Safety issues. But fix and chain link, you know, pest side, patient weed control, and every single item. Some of these things have been completed already, and this list is about ten item longer. So. The last slide shows our project task list. This shows in a perfect world, weather's great. We have three man crew right now. We start our day Monday through Friday, doing the run through the fallen trash, picking weeds, splash pad, loose trash, park and ride. That list takes roughly twenty-three and four hours, depending on how much used, what the weather's look like. So half the day is spent just doing the run. And after we get done with run-through Monday through Thursday, get into mowing, and then scout municipal buildings Monday, city parks on Tuesday, ball fields on Tuesday, Thursday. City Hall locations, Public Works helping us, that does make it that far from that list, but we will split inside schedule. Friday, we use like to clean our job, we can't have to admit, catch up on any of the projects we have. But I do want to point out with our daily task list that we have here and our project list, the three man crew, we are kind of playing house, Scott, we be back and forth between some of the projects that we have and our normal daily schedule. So we are managing it, but it's the fact that we're getting. Just let us make the task. But getting into the impact that parks have on our communities. So on the left, the N R P A Department of Parks, that is some creative material for you. On the right, health and wellness, Parks and Rec agencies provide safe space, park and rec services that are essential to communities' vitality. They also serve as key backers in advancing health and technical equipment and intensive quality. So according to the N R P A's twenty nineteen engagement with park survey, ninety-three percent of people who responded indicate that it's essential for local governments to acquire and strengthen the pain, building parks, trails, and green spaces, air bodies of water, to shed natural resources. Property values, six out of seven respondents to the twenty-five-three engagement with park surveys indicate that they see high form parks and ready amenities while shooting up with stuff. And I can tell you firsthand, from working in the city of Nashville, people will call the city, will call Parks Department, they will find park employees out there in the park and ask questions, just inquiring what the state of park is, how many parks there are. So this is absolutely true and I've seen this. Twenty-two, three, we're not gay and making parks work. Students or respondents who have personally or have helpful members who have visited local parks and rec facilities during the past year. The key reasons people go to the parks, fifty percent responded to be friends and family, forty-seven people responded they break with distress, forty-six percent said exercise to stay fit, be close to nature, to experience adventure, to connect with the community, and learn, feel well. Five economic reason benefits of Parks and Rec facilities, parks attract home fires, parks attract businesses, businesses tend to go where the home fires go, parks attract tourism, tourism brings in money from outside, people just earn their money where it is. Well, parks lower public health costs, so people getting out, getting a lot fit, tend to not go to the doctor's office. Open spaces can reduce costs of pollution, so including trees, flooring, cost of wastewater. I actually have a survey done by engineering group, but anybody has questions about that? And some pictures of some events and some of our community stuff. Our future planning, to add a second crew focusing on our mowing, to add additional equipment, vehicles for additional staff, to add a social media programs manager, this person would be running the social medias for Parks and Rec, setting up educational programs and city events. Also planning growing the park community, of building new parks on recent parkland, acquire additional properties for new parks, acquire additional property for recreational facilities, both focusing on fitness, and to create educational programs, provide ample recreational classes and activities. Anybody have any questions?
Are you currently working to fill your open position right now?
Right now, that is currently.
Is that park across from Cooper Valley, is that in the works now?
Not as of yet, we're getting through our current park foundation project.
No questions? No, sir. Steve, thank you very much, very good report.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
More slides of the C P H.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. Next item, discuss and receive an update regarding the County Road seven oh five flooding. Mr. Peacock.
We did work with the property owner along seven oh five, their council. The county had some representatives out there, the county commissioner was there, the county engineer was there, county attorney was there. Our attorney was there along with Kristen, Erin, and Amber. I, I did get a phone call from one of the property owners who was a little upset that felt like he was a little disrespected at some point. I haven't been able to find anybody that was there to really corroborate that and could recall it happening. I think what sounds like it may be just a case of something was said and it wasn't heard. Not that the person was ignored, I think they just didn't hear him speak. But the overall meeting, he was happy with, Mr. Samuel was out there and with his folks. And I think they're really just rehashed the same as the previous two meetings out there. They're frustrated, every time it rains, you know, we typically hear from them. And, and I, I think that the solution is going to be a long, more of a long-term solution, more of a build-out, and, and that he can get in there. I think Samuel has agreed to, to do some things as he has before. But they've got to get to the point right now, or the big point is to, to go in there and start dredging ponds and changing out water, because there's still going to be runoff until the grass and everything gets put in place. But I have not heard any negative comments about the meeting. And I think everything is kind of going as planned. Erin, Terry, do you have any different opinions of that? Something that I missed, feel free to, to speak up.
I just gave you some of the, I think, discussed, they plan to like widen the shot. That was engineering, about the most orange. And that was, I had also agreed to come out and do some earthwork, kind of like give out some of the broadway areas with runner pipe truck. Once they complete that, then there's any group will come in and redo some of the channel that. The front door, toward the ponds, and also putting it out for the ball. They've already, they've already got some. They have peaks. Still fin, still fencing.
They also, the issue of the water going over the road on the seven oh five, there's just feet outside of where that road from, will come out and touch seven oh five once it, once that roadway is put through. Probably ten, fifteen feet just to the east of that is where that culvert is. So it's actually outside of the section of the roadway, it'll be in the city limits. I talked to Larry Woolley about it, the commissioner for that area. Before they could, that, that culvert is rotting out from, from underneath, it's pretty much a rugged for the most part. It's got a lot of sediment in it, there's not a whole lot of storage capacity in the drainage channels along the roadway and the bar ditch, and so those are things that we talked about, cleaning out, working together to get that whole area cleaned out and flowing better. That culvert is going to have to be. That culvert is going to have to be replaced, he was asking for some flows, uh, some runoff flows from the engineers so that they could size that. We've got that information, I forwarded that to uh, to the commissioner's office, uh, that we got from the studies from Samuel that the engineers had, so. But I also agree that probably this is not the time to fix that, we need to wait till that road is in. There's another detention pond that's coming in there, I will make sure we get uh oids started in that so we don't fill that culvert up with uh with sand coming out of that, so. It's, there's some spots in the road need being repaired, the Larry, Mr. Woolley's going to take care of getting that done. It still puts water through it, it's it's not problematic at this point, but so it's on the radar to get fixed. And I I'm going to work with uh Samuel and uh see if maybe they'll develop a little help, cover some of the cost of getting that. If that's, that's for the park.
Do you have any questions? Thank you, Mike. Okay, uh, next item, discuss and receive an update regarding the sign ordinance.
So we took the, I I visited with um the gentleman that spoke to y'all at the last council meeting uh about the signs. Um, we looked through the this section that he was talking about, um, I I will respectfully disagree that it's um bit hard to understand, difficult for you to confusing. Um, I think it was very clear, I I really think the problem was that he was trying to read something that just was not there. When that ordinance was uh put in place, these um feather signs, as they call them, really weren't around, they they really weren't of issue, so they're not included in that. But because of some some rulings that have come down about signs and what you can regulate, what you can't. Our sign notice does need an update, so I've tasked Erin um with uh overseeing that project. And she doesn't know it yet, but Molly was ordered to volunteer uh to help. Since a lot of these people that want to advertise are going to be folks she deals with anyway, so I think she's going to be a good, she's going to be a good eye for review these things and and help us see where, we want to help the businesses thrive, we don't want to restrict them, you know, sometimes they need to advertise, get things out. We've been looking through a couple of different ordinances, we landed on one that we like. So Erin has scheduled the first set down to go to those, I believe, Monday, Monday, we'll start taking a look at that and uh and seeing how well we can can make adjustments to that and uh have something for you saying that. I would like to tell you that it'll be next month, but I'm going to stop short of saying that. There's a lot of things that need to be changed, I don't want to rush it, it's not something we do every day and it's always been a hot topic, it's time to deal with it. So we'll, we'll start that process on that.
Any questions?
Oh, and I will tell you, we did make arrangements for the signs that he wanted. I s- I still think he's got some paperwork to finish up, permit wise, uh, Kayla was going to reach out to him yesterday or today, or we asked her to reach out to him yesterday. But he is, he has moved them out, spread them apart, so they're not all in the corner, and we worked ready to get it done, so he's he's in good shape.
But you received phone call from Mr. Blue thanking uh the council for listening to him and uh praising uh how well Mike's worked with him and he he's happy that that we are paying attention to what he was requesting, so uh he he was a happy citizen. Any other questions? Okay, at this time, we're going to move into our our town call meeting. Uh, we're going to discuss and answer questions regarding the May fourth, twenty twenty-four bond election, Mr. Peacock.
We have um I guess we're started with the the getting information out as best we can uh through the website, through um social media, through some uh newsletters. We are, we've got the Citizens Police Alumni Group uh has done some things uh with the police department part of it. There are some signs out, there's some informative signs out, we're looking at a mailer of uh getting that ready to get um sent out in the next week or so, fair very quickly. Um, but then we're still scheduled, we have scheduled um uh some visits with some folks, we had a an open house here and across the street, uh, it was not very well attended. Say that, we're and we're doing some other things with um Mariposa and some other agencies targeting where we can go on this with some of them about things that are going on uh with those buildings and uh answering questions they may have, since sometimes it's difficult for them to get up here to us. The uh I have not personally fielded any phone calls about it, um, there there's not a whole lot of we haven't, as far as I know, gotten any Facebook requests or or aggressive website for information. Or put things out with with people that are asking questions and up up there, uh, there's not a it's kind of like the school, there's not a tremendous amount of of uh Q and A going on at the school, I am actually thinking about, I'm going to visit with Corey Harrison tomorrow. They're doing some uh online kind of Q and A stuff live where people can can write in questions or send in questions, get answered online. We're going to see how that works, I'm not sure how set up we are to do something like that, but I'm going to take a look at it, we might be able to do something like that also. So we're uh happy to take any questions that uh are out there, but.
Have anybody who has any questions in the audience? Okay, any, are they on council, have any questions or comments?
No, sir.
Uh, want to thank the uh Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association for uh what they're doing to to help get the information out about this, they're they're doing a good job. Okay. Okay, moving right along, uh, updates from mayor and council members and updates from city staff members. Uh, it's been kind of a hectic couple of months, uh, things things have gone real well. I was invited to and attended the um Burleson Chamber of Commerce meeting today, uh, they had their state of the city uh address, kind of like we did a couple of months ago. We're working real hard with the other cities in the the county and our our county government to get some funds here from Techs dot to start working on our roads. Um, we have an opportunity to put another Johnson County member on the COG board. Um, we are are nominating the county judge, uh, Chris Vodker for that position. If anybody understands how the COG works, please let me know, but basically, the people on the board, cities seems to be the ones to get the money.
The big cities.
The be- the bigger cities and just the cities that are involved, uh, uh, Midlothian, their mayor used to be the president of that and Midlothian got all those new roads and everything through there pretty quick. Uh, one of the things that we have talked about um with Victoria Johnson, who's uh city council member of Burleson um, that's also on the COG, uh, and in two, two, three years, she will actually be president of the COG. Is anything that they can do to start pushing Techs dot to get off center for our nine seventeen underpass. Um, and uh Judge Beddicker is is well aware of that and willing to, if he gets on the board, to to push as much as that goes. Um, if he didn't get a chance to, we have a lovely spring on Main Street on the thirteenth. Looked like from what I saw, it was going to be pretty well attended, Johnny uh was up there pretty much most of the day. Um, Chamber did an excellent job putting that together and uh we had had a good turnout on that. Anybody else have anything? Staff, any of the staff have anything?
Got a quick comment if I may. Several of you know, I know some of y'all were there, some of the staff was there, but last weekend, the Chislenfilmburn Hunter Club held their annual VIP uh event for the upcoming clay shoot, which is May the third. There was uh about two hundred and seventy-five people in attendance, where we, they were fed and given all kinds of opportunities to buy things and win things and do a little shooting and game playing and stuff, it's always a really nice event. The uh, very happy to say that we had our biggest year yet. Um, the last three years, actually, we have seen increases in what we've done, this year we um have topped the one hundred and eighty thousand dollar mark. Uh, for just that event, the clay shoot will draw in almost another hundred thousand. And all of those proceeds are for first responders, over two thousand first responders in Johnson County, Good County, Somerville County, and in the city of Mansfield. We have, our city, I believe is the only city currently that uh all police officers and all firefighters are members. And uh we at one time had hundred percent city council membership, which we don't now. Um, but I suggest to you that we are, we'll say to you that we should, it's a it's a great cause. Uh, that club donate or provides line of death benefits of eighty thousand dollars uh for any firefighter, police officer, paramedic, jailer, any kind of first responder. State, local, federal, if they're in our coverage area. That's an eighty thousand dollar death benefit and then also a a injury uh benefit for if you're injured, whether you're if you're injured on duty, and then there's also a uh survivor benefit for a death outside of of duty, if it's just a sudden death for for whatever reason. I'm not aware of any other city council that has um a hundred percent membership, but uh I will start hound dogging y'all to give that some consideration uh going forward, because I would like to have that and and get the plaque to hang on the wall that says we're there. We just recently paid a uh eighty thousand dollar benefit to the uh Somerville County Deputy Sheriff Sergeant that was killed on duty in a car accident. His wife knew nothing about the club uh and was quite surprised when when all that happened, so um it it's a great cause, a great organization, the clay shoot is on May the third. Invite any of you to come out if you want to see how that works and uh try your luck, we'll find a team to put you on or just get you to hang out and eat some good food and visit with a room full of first responders and uh also want to thank Molly uh and Amber who came out um just to help with the VIP. And uh they worked very hard at keeping things moving and rolling, doing just whatever was asked of them. And I appreciate it, I know everybody there did too. It's good to see everybody, good to see people from the city.
The shoot's the third or the fourth?
I'm sorry?
It's the the third or the fourth.
Friday the third of May. And you can still buy tickets for the side by side if you're interested in winning that. For Mike and Tziz. When I win it, I'll drive it by and let you take a look in. It is a great cause, if any of y'all wants some information, I've got some handouts in my office, I'd be glad to get whatever information they need. All of our people are covered, so.
Yeah.
It's a good cause and I know it's done some good work in there.
We can count on you to sign that?
Yeah. Not ever heard of it.
Alice, you want to talk about your?
Yes, sir, we actually got three events coming up, um, one, that one before the city wide cleanup is this weekend, starts Friday, goes through Sunday, seven to six. One boat for a household and it's at ten eighty South Broadway. Um, the second one, early building starts Monday, early buildings here at city hall. Next week, it's all joined record business hours and to call anybody in Tuesday from seven to eight. And the third one, he touched a little bit on it, but it's the uh for National Day Prayer, there'll be a gathering here at city hall, five code on May second at seven fifteen. Everyone stand by and I'll send something out.
Uh, what about your event you hosted?
Oh, yes, the North Texas Movement Forum Association, um, I hosted an event down there at Shox on Broadway. Perfect place to take a bunch away, there are a few men, and it went wonderful, um, the president of the Texas State Association was present. And she felt more welcome than ever, um, she sent a great thank you letter to myself, um, along with Mayor and Mike. He gave him some very nice presents from the city. And I think everyone of the courts there felt very appreciated at the mayor's speech. It was great.
And they spent a bunch of money in that.
Yes, they did.
Biggest state they've ever had, is what they're saying. So.
The election, uh, I know you're running around kind of crazy, do you have a collection point for the uh setting efficiency and then keeping off the rail?
The early election is is here, is the regular election.
The early building has to be wide and located, so early buildings here, and on election day, um, we have to share our Texas education code with the school, so we have the community bring. Everything's separated, schools are one side, we have room for courts and judge, but everything's separate.
And and do not forget, May twenty eighth is the runoff election for state representative. Um, on the twenty fourth at twelve thirty, twelve to one thirty at O'Wine Knot, uh, there is a meet and greet uh for Helen Kirwin, who is running against Dwayne Burns, um, everybody's invited to attend. Uh, O'Wine Knot is just right down Main Street on the other side of La Mesa. Yes, a really nice place, if you've not been in there, you need to go see it. Okay? Yes. Okay, any other updates or anybody want to talk about anything? All right, public forum, uh, is there anybody signed up to speak during public forum? No, does any of the citizens or anybody here have anything they'd like to say to the council? Be nice. Okay, okay, uh, consent agenda, discuss considering possible action on the March twenty first, twenty twenty four meeting minutes and discuss considering possible action on a resolution approving the city of Joshua investment report for the quarter ending March thirty first, twenty twenty four. Marcy, did you have anything you wanted to say about that? All right, uh, do we want to go to any separately or together?
Together, it's fine.
Yeah, okay, call, accept the motion?
Make the motion that we approve both uh agenda items.
Okay, I have a motion by Mike, seconded by Johnny to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Be unanimous. Okay, moving into the regular gen, item number one, discuss consider possible action on subscriber services agreement with the city of Fort Worth for radio repairs. You feel for, and I said it right.
This is, this is simply a corrupt file, the city of Fort Worth, the district has actually made repairs on our existing radios, mobile radios, portable radios, we're all in and so, peer range, and it has made some deteriorating parts, I do my best to fix them in-house. Instead of sending it's facing off to motorola directly, the city of Fort Worth gives a very strength of that to the community, they have announced that they should work on.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, sir. Okay?
Many years have passed.
Okay, so, uh, all accept the motion?
Let's approve subscriber service agreement with the city of Fort Worth for radio repairs.
Second the motion, I've got a motion by Johnny, seconded by Dakota to accept the agreement as presented. Any questions, any discussion, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Item number three, discuss consider, or not, excuse me, number two. Discuss considering possible action on approving a site plan for point one five six acres of land known as Watts Three and Four Block Ten, original town Joshua. W buyer survey abstract number. W buyer survey abstract number twenty-nine, county of Johnson, Texas, locally known as two oh seven North Main, to allow for construction in the commercial professional building. Mr. Malvinado? Do I have any questions, Mr. Malvinado?
This is a, just a general purpose building, or is there something planned to be in it? Is it going to be offices? Is it going to be, is there a plan?
At the moment, he has a potential contract with the business.
So something like.
Is there more than one office there? Just one building? Big old story. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Okay, thank you, Mr. Malvinado. Okay, no questions. Anybody have a motion?
Make the motion we approve.
Site plan?
Yes, site plan. Sitting here reading two different words and I'm like, which one am I supposed to pick?
Good deal. All right, we have motion by Mike Kidd, seconded by Merle, to accept the site plan as stated in the thing here for two oh seven North Main. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Item number three, discuss considering possible action regarding the chapter three eighty agreement between the Joshua Economic Development Corporation and SMI Southern Multi Foods Incorporated Taco Bell for development location at one thirteen South Broadway in Joshua, Texas. Ream.
Good morning, Mary. Good evening, Mayor Johnson. It is a pleasure to present to you the two items on the checklist. The first one would be the agreement, the agreement with SMI Multi Foods, which is Taco Bell. We've been working on this project for a little over a year now. We have struggled to find the perfect piece of property for them. Happy to report that they did find that piece. It is at one thirteen South Broadway where the house property resides. Right next to the circle. One of their requests was for us to reimburse the asbestos abatement as well as demolition of the house home, as well as impact fees. And it is also, one of the incentives was also to expedite permitting. I'm always proud to announce that our loan services will be good and pretty fantastic staying on path with our days, so I can give them the results.
So the total cost of the reimbursement, demolition and impact fees is?
It will be, we don't know what the impact fees are going to be. We're estimating they're going to be around forty seven thousand. But we are under the impression that it may be lower, so at this point, we're looking at just a little around. Oh, also, I would like to add that we did receive, they have all already turned in their site plans. Our city engineer has returned back to the Taco Bell engineer with their final review. They are completing up a few things that the city engineer has been, but I talked to the Taco Bell rep late last week, and they are scheduled to start the asbestos abatement on Main Six, which will also follow the demolition of the house. So they consider that, you know, their official breaking ground, so we're looking at Main Six. We're very excited.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Second motion, we accept the chapter three eighty agreement between Joshua Economic Development Corporation and SMI for Taco Bell for a development at one thirteen Broadway.
Okay, I've got a motion by Shelley, seconded by Angela, to accept the chapter three agreement between Joshua Economic Development Corporation and SMI Southwest Multi Foods for the Taco Bell at one thirteen South Broadway, Joshua. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. All right, move on to item four, is discuss considering possible action regarding the chapter three agreement between Joshua Economic Development Corporation and the Whataburger Corporation for development located at ten forty-four South Broadway in Joshua, Texas.
This is a project I've been working on for years. I am proud to say that they are actually very thinking of smaller cities. They decided to go for it. We were in the running with several other cities, and I'm proud to report that they have chosen to come to Joshua and they will be going into that property, the vacant land right next to the box. The only thing they have asked for was some reimbursement, reimbursement on the impact fees and then also some reimbursement on city line, city inspection, and city management, which that will not exceed. The total, again, with the impact fees, we're not sure exactly how much the cost, but I did ask them to ask about it. And again, we do that. You know, amazingly, the easiest thing for us to do, because our city is just really so great to work with, is it's a big deal for developers when they can expedite permitting. And we have, I'll also have to work that, develop that a very, very happy way, city.
Okay, anybody have any questions on this one? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Move to approve chapter three eighty agreement for Joshua Economic Development Corporation in S. In Whataburger. I'll get there in a minute. For development land on ten forty-four South Broadway in Joshua, Texas.
I have a motion by Johnny, seconded by Mike, to accept the, or to approve the chapter three eighty agreement between Joshua Economic Development Corporation and the Whataburger Corporation for development located at ten forty-four South Broadway in Joshua, Texas. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous.
There, I'd like to say Molly has worked all the hard, a little bit, I say hard, and just really been in there for us and I appreciate it.
Most definitely do. She wears that three M, she wears that three M label proudly, don't she? So, all right, staff reports. Has anybody, everybody had a chance to look at staff reports? Have any questions on any of them? Nope? Okay. So at.
On those staff reports. Are there any of the departments that are having any issues meeting your, meeting our request to lower their budget items and slow their spending down? Is there any, anything that has become a problem? Keeping up with?
Pulling her own.
No, everybody is is doing well. They, nobody had a too big a bit when Marcy and I kind of finished up the chairman things. I think things are going well. We're not seeing a decline in any of the services.
I know it's been tough and we appreciate everything that y'all have done to lower your costs as much as you can. Thank you for that.
Chief, how are the two candidates, the two we're talking about for the positions we have available?
Yeah, turning loose.
Any other questions about staff reports? Okay, then at seven thirty, we're going to convene into a executive session pursuant to section five five one point zero eight seven of the Texas Government Code to discuss or deliberate regarding commercial or financial information received from or the offer of a financial or other incentive made to a business prospect seeking to stay, locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of the city and with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations. At seven fifty-eight, I'm calling this meeting back to order. There's no action required from the discussions during the executive session. Does anybody have any future agenda items they would like to have discussed? Awesome. In that case, at seven fifty-nine, we're adjourned.